Now in session, if everyone would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, as always, we thank you for bringing us together safely this evening. Let us remember that 17 years ago tomorrow, 2,977 lives were lost, martyrs were born, and heroes did what no one thought possible. We thank you for the continued dedication and commitment of those who selflessly serve. May we live this day and every day conscious of all our blessings, in your holy name. Amen. Thank you all for your patience with our late start. Carmen, roll call vote.
Markovich.
Here.
Spitali. Kelwinski.
Here.
Torres.
Here.
Higgs.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Warple.
Here.
Rakos.
Here.
Vanez.
Here. Let the record reflect eight present, one absent. Moving on to reading of the minutes. Gentlemen, Councilman Spitali is not here. Would someone please?
He's on the floor now.
Okay. Carmen, will you let the record reflect that Councilman Spitali is now here? Thank you. Reading of the minutes.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Spitali.
Motion to accept the minutes from August 27, 2018.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Emerson, to accept the minutes of August 27, 2018. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to approval of claims.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman.
Move for approval of claims, August 22, 2018 through September 5, 2018, for council meeting of September 10, 2018, beginning with claims dated 8/22/18 and ending with claims dated 9/5/18. Claim number 5174 through claim 5382 for a total of $6,163,801.16. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs, to accept the claims from August 22 through September 5, 2018. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Carmen, roll call vote, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes. Claims pass, nine in favor, zero opposed. Moving on to public hearings, there are none. Communications.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
First of all, I'd like to thank all of my constituents, as well as people from within the community who came out at the unveiling of Ms. Perlin Jenkins honorary street at 936 Conkey Street. I certainly appreciate your presence and thank you all for coming, as well as my colleagues on the council. Councilman Markovich was in attendance, Councilman Torres, as well as Councilman Spitali. Thank you all for attending.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other communications?
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
I received a correspondence in regards to the property at 1137 Morris Street and also 11, I think it's 1118 Morris Street, where they cut the lines, but they are not picking up the tree limbs. So I'm requesting a letter go to Code Enforcement in regards to addressing those concerns and whoever, I don't know who they are hiring to do it, but I would hope that they would pick up the tree limbs that are sitting on the property as well. I so move.
What kind of tree limbs are these, Councilman?
I guess they're trees that fell and they were cut and then they just left them there after they cut the line.
Okay. Alrighty. There is a motion on the floor to have a letter sent to Code Enforcement regarding 1137 and 1118 Morris regarding picking up tree limbs. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Torres. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any other communications?
Madam Chairman.
Yes, Councilman Torres.
We just received a letter of the Calumet Bridge between Michigan and Sibley. I guess there's gonna be a delay because of problems that they came upon. But anyway, I just wanted, I'm gonna give this guy a call, the communications director, Matthew Disly, make sure that there is a sidewalk with a safety rail on it, whether it's guard rail or whatever they put for the purpose of pedestrians, not only kids walking that, but they worry about cars coming in on the sidewalk. And some of them, like the Columbia overpass, they didn't, or the Humana overpass, they didn't put the rail on it. And also for the safety of disabled people that have to negotiate and navigate the bridge with electric scooters. And they worry, again, about a car coming up on the sidewalk. So I don't know if that is part of the plan, but they usually make them too narrow and don't put those safety rails on or the, on them. So I guess what I'm saying is that I'm gonna communicate with this guy some kind of way and see if that's in the plans and the designs of it. Thank you.
Alrighty. Any other communications?
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
I actually request a letter be sent in regards to the completion of the project on Calumet Avenue to the state of Indiana. And it says, "I just received this letter on behalf of the Hammond City Council concerning the completion of the Calumet Avenue Bridge project. Unfortunately, this project is behind schedule due to design issues that have forced INDOT to network and plans to ensure the result in a quality finished project. Sometimes during a project, these types of concerns are realized. And while we certainly do not want to extend the project timeline, we do not want to make sure the finished product is the best quality." And that means extending the project. Unfortunately, it is necessary. We apologize for the inconvenience drives in the city of Hammond have to endure. We understand that this is not idle, but we are working extraditsiously to, for the project as much as possible. Both parties of the bridge work, were planned and completed this year. By the end of November, these delays forced us to divide Phase 1 and 1 Phase 2 and push the final completion back to July of 2019. Our current Phase 1 construction is completed around the end of October. At the point, the road will be reopened in two lanes in each direction, and the road will still be divided. Phase 2 of the project, which is the replacement of the northbound lanes, will begin next spring around April 1, Phase 2, and the entire project will be completed around the end of July of 2019. Again, we apologize for the delay and the inconvenience it will cause the city of Hammond, but INDOT believes it's better to have the bridge fully open during the winter rather than have of it closed in the state of demolition or reconstruction. If you have any questions or if you can help with anything else, please let us know in the future. And you are welcome to reach out to me directly with any concerns. So again, I guess, Councilman, if you want to request it, on a new unfinished business to send a letter for additional questions or concerns you have, you can. But that was my concern, because I know they've been working on the bridge, and so this was the response we got back in regards to finalizing and completing the bridge on Calumet Avenue.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other communications? Any other communications? Any other communications? Communications are now closed. Moving on to committee reports. No committees met this evening, but at this time, I would like to announce the upcoming community and crime watch meetings. On Friday, September 21, Community Watch at Silver Birch will begin at 2:00 p.m. On Tuesday, September 18, the East Hammond Pullman Crime Watch will meet at the Ophelia Steen Center at 6:30 p.m. On Friday, September 14, Edison Community Watch on the Road will meet at the Golden Manor Senior Apartment Building, that's on the corner of 175th and Columbia. That is at 1:00 p.m. On Thursday, September 20, the Husville Crime Watch will meet at the Gene Shepherd Center that will begin at 7:00 p.m. On Wednesday, September 19, Lafayette Neighborhood Watch will meet at Lafayette School, beginning at 6:30 p.m. The South Hammond Crime Watch will meet Thursday, September 20, at the Hammond Housing Authority Building on the corner of 173rd and Chestnut. That begins at 7:00 p.m. And the Whiting Roberts Dale Crime Watch will meet Thursday, September 13, at Calumet College at 6:30 p.m. Once again, this is an excellent opportunity for everyone to find out what's going on in their neighborhood and get updates on things going on in the city, because community is not just about me, it's about us. Committee reports is now closed. Moving on to ordinance, third and final passage, there are none. Introduction of ordinances.
1816, an ordinance, amending ordinance 8108, known as Section 33.03 of the Hammond Municipal Code as it pertains to EMTs and paramedics.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
I move this ordinance, first and second reading by title, and refer to council as a whole at our next scheduled meeting, which would be October the 9th. I so move.
No.
Twenty-fourth. Twenty-fourth. September 24th, but we have one on the 9th as well.
At what time?
Five o'clock. Five o'clock.
Okay. Thank you. There's a motion on the floor by Councilman Higgs. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Kelwinski for first and second reading.
That was Councilman Spitali was seconded to that motion.
Who did I say? Oh, I'm sorry. Councilman Spitali. Thank you very much. First and second reading of ordinance 1816 with a committee meeting on September 24 at 5:00 p.m. with council as a whole. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
I also like a letter sent to, I, San, Sant, what is it, Lord Jesus, Ms. Daniels, who handles personnel, so she can be in attendance for this meeting, seeing it affects the way the expenditures are paid out as it relates to EMTs within our city. I so move.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That does conclude the introduction of ordinances. Resolutions, there are none. New and unfinished business.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Warple.
I'd like to make a motion that we pass the petition for variance on the St. Michael's Ukrainian Hall property at 1230 170th Place in Hammond. It's in our packets. And basically what this is, is it's for the old St. Michael's Hall. The short version of it is, is they're not changing any of the, it'll remain a hall, it's just kinda like transferring the variance that the hall had in conjunction with the church to if they sell the hall for private ownership. And I just want to make the motion that we go ahead and approve the petition as submitted.
Alrighty. Before we move on to a second on that, Carmen, would you like to read from the agenda exactly what 1817 is?
1817, petition of St. Michael's Ukrainian Hall for variance of use from zoning ordinance to allow for a private club slash lodge located at 1230 170th Place within the city of Hammond, Lake County, Indiana.
Alrighty. So now there is a motion on the floor by Councilman Warple.
Second.
Second by Councilman Rakos for approval of, what is that, a petition documentation?
It's to approve the petition that was passed by the BZA.
Okay.
If it helps, there's a couple, there's three conditions on here, and can I ask Attorney Yeney to come up and explain it, please?
Certainly. It's a petition for variance of use that was approved by the BZA. We have a few conditions on there. One is, and they're all gonna be spelled out in the minutes, I haven't actually seen the minutes, I was here at the hearing, but I can tell you, they have to do with the parking lot. We have to have a cross easement parking agreement, so the church can use the hall's parking lot, the hall can use the church's parking lot, that when we reconfigure the lots, that we allow for 11 extra spaces. And then finally, we have an area where there's an encroachment, because some pavement goes into what would be otherwise the green strip between the street and the parking lot. And I'm sorry, Scott Yeney here, appearing on behalf of St. Michael's Church this evening. Thank you.
Alrighty. Thank you. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
I think a motion needs to be made with the exception, including the BZA plan included in this particular resolution, so if you want to include that.
Now, we're just, the motion is to pass what the BZA sent us and to approve the petition as amended, as submitted.
Okay. So, motion by Councilman Warple, second by Councilman Rakos for final passage of 1817. Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? Carmen, roll call vote, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes. 1817 passes, nine in favor, zero opposed. Any other new and unfinished?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman.
Like to make the announcement that, let's see if I got this right, the Finance Committee hearing scheduled in the council chambers for tomorrow night at 4:00 has been changed to Thursday, the 13th, at 4:30 p.m. in the council chambers. And also, the department head meeting on the budget that was scheduled for this Saturday is now scheduled for Wednesday, September 19, at 4:30 p.m.
Do you have a roll call vote on that?
No.
Nope? Okay. So, the Finance Committee meeting that was scheduled tomorrow evening at 4:00 has been rescheduled to Thursday, September 13, at 4:30 p.m. And the department's, oh, the department's meeting on Saturday, which is the, what is the date, Saturday?
Fifteenth.
The 15th, has been rescheduled to the 19th of September at 4:30 p.m., and I believe that's a Thursday. Is that correct?
Correct.
Alrighty. Okay. Any other?
No, I got it as a Wednesday. Madam President.
Yes, Councilman.
Also, I'd like a letter sent to all the department here, so they're notified, as well as the Hammond Times, so that they are aware of it, because I don't see anyone from the Hammond Times here, as well as I didn't see Ms. Perlin's unveiling of her street. However, we certainly want them to be notified, so that there's no confusion in regards to the budget. I so move.
Motion by Councilman Higgs, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Spitali to have a letter sent to the Times and all the appropriate people, notifying everyone of the change of the meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any other new and unfinished business?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
From Calumet Avenue to Soul on Fayette, there are a number of tree limbs and high growing grass, so I'm requesting that Public Works is notified and if they can get over there and cut and clean that as quickly as possible, so this is presentable in our city. I would appreciate it. I so move.
And that was Calumet Avenue to what?
From Calumet Avenue to Soul Street on Fayette, which happens to be the second district of the city of Hammond.
Alrighty. Motion by Councilman Higgs to have a letter sent to whom, code?
Public Works.
Public Works. Regarding some trees on Calumet Avenue from Soul to Fayette, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Second by Councilman Torres. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any other new and unfinished?
Madam Chairman.
Yes, Councilman Torres.
Yeah, I'd like a letter sent to INDOT regarding the overpass between Michigan and Sibley, asking them, are there any plans in the design to include that, to widen that pedestrian sidewalk with either rail guard or any safety provisions for pedestrians and disabled people with motor scooters.
Second.
Alrighty.
His name is Matthew Disly, he's the Communication Director, Northwest District, Deanna Department of Transportation.
Okay, he's the one that we got that response from. Okay, so we have his information. Motion by Councilman Torres, second by Councilman Higgs, to have a letter sent to INDOT regarding the overpass on Michigan and Sibley, what their plans are to widen, did I?
The overpass on Calumet Avenue between Michigan and?
Okay. Alrighty. And what their plans are to widen the pedestrian walkway.
And put safety rails on it.
And safety rails.
Or pedestrian safety.
Alright. Okay. Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any other new and unfinished business?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman.
I'd like a letter sent to Code Enforcement in regards to the property on Eaton Street, the 1100 Block of Eaton, which was formerly owned by Ethel Floyd, who's been, which has been vacant for a number of years, and it's ISO on the 1100 Block of Eaton. And also the property at 1020 Dracker, which is also vacant, has been vacant for a number of years, and so I can get a status on what's exactly gonna happen with that property and any other properties that were in relations to the third district that are maybe possibly on the demo list and what the status of that property is. I so move.
Councilman, what is the address on Eaton? You said the 1100 Block.
Address, 11, I think it's 1108. It's a yellow house, but they can pull it up. It's Ethel Floyd's house.
Okay.
She's been deceased for a number of years.
So, motion by Councilman Higgs to have a letter sent to Code Enforcement regarding 1108 Eaton Street. It's a yellow house that's been vacant, and also 1020 Dracker that has been vacant for some time, and what their intention is with those two properties. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Torres. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any other new and unfinished business?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
I did receive a letter from the Hammond Fire Department, and it says, "Once again, we celebrate the Fire Prevention Week. On October 6, 2018, the department will held a one-day open house event at Station 8, located at 6350 Parrish. In the effort to provide raffle prizes and snacks in an intending public, the Hammond Fire Department is seeking financial donations to assist the offsetting cost of the event. The donations are appreciated, my consideration may be given, and look forward to your continued interactions. Sincerely, Michael Picken, Chief Inspector, Bureau of the Fire, Prevention and Public Education." Certainly, I'm very much interested, and I'm also interested if there are any fire detectors that are available that could be given out in the community. I'm certainly interested in that as well, so I plan on attending this event, and I look forward to being there.
Thank you. Just an FYI, Councilman, the American Red Cross is giving away free fire detectors. They were at National Night Out, and they were accepting names for anyone who's looking for a free fire detector to be installed in their home, so they can contact the American Red Cross. Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is now closed. Public expression. Thank you, Carmen. The first speaker of the night is Nick Flaschek.
1131, 1139 Morris is the same block as you were, those empty lots.
Nick Flaschek?
Mr. Flaschek was associated with the church, I believe he's.
Okay. Alrighty. Next speaker, George Howard.
Good evening, Madam President.
Can you take your name and address for the record, please?
George Howard, 625 Allen Street in Gare, Indiana.
Thank you.
First of all, good evening. Last week, we had the opportunity to celebrate an icon in the community of Ms. Perlin Jenkins. At 936 Conkey Street, we were able to rename the street after this young lady, who did a lot in the community. Currently, many constituents who, not only friends, but people who are affected by the results of her work in the community, are here as well. My request is that 936 Conkey Street, which has now been scheduled for demolition, that we're trying to save Ms. Perlin Jenkins' home. We've tried to go through City Ordinance Commission, as well, City Ordinance as well as through the inspection office, to no avail. At this point, I'm out of resources, I don't, not of resources, I'm out of ideas. I need the help of the council. We did, there was something suggested, such as a status hearing. If I could have a meeting with Mr. Kelly, and we could come to kind of some kind of consensus as to what we believe is viable in saving this home, I would be obliged. Three members of the city council have already been inside of the. Uh, three members of the, uh, of the city council have already been inside of the home, um, and have submitted to the committee, um, the request to rehabilitate 936 Conkey Street, which is, um, not acceptable. So, at this point, I'm not really sure how I go from there. I was advised that it would probably be better not to give this statement, but because we did have several people from, several constituents from the city, you know, come out to support this cause, uh, I felt that it was necessary, uh, to give this statement. Um, the communication between Mr. Kelly and I has not been, uh, one that I would say has been professional. Um, I've had to tell him, uh, more than one occasion, this is not a power contest, I just wanna save the home. Uh, when I mentioned to him that I had even spoken to Congressman Higgs, or Councilman Higgs, excuse me.
Thank you for the increased guidance, eh?
And, um, I also wanted to commend, uh, Councilman Higgs also, uh, is doing a job well done in getting the sh- the city, the city street renamed, uh, after Ms. Jenkins. But I think it would be remiss to the city that if we rename the street and then demolish her home when someone is trying to save it. So, at this time, I just wanted to have my voice heard and see what could be done in this effort.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker of the evening is Rita Jackson.
Yes.
The next speaker is Roelle Blackman.
Good evening to everyone in the council, all the councilmen. On behalf of Mr. George Howard and my Councilman Anthony Higgs, I'm here just to get the clarification also on the, uh, Perling Jenkins' home being demolished. I just want the clarification why, and, uh, how long, if it is going to be, and why wasn't the community, uh, informed about this? I didn't know about it until I went to her dedication of her home. I've known her all my life, she's like an aunt to me. Her mother, my mother, was in the same, uh, female women's club, and so I've known her all my life. I'm hoping that this is not true. I don't know what the reason is, I don't know how many, but there's a lot of homes there in that block that is in worse shape than hers, and I've never heard where they're gonna demolish those homes. But like I said, I'm just here for clarification of the understanding of why the house has been demolished, and if so, I'm willing to lock with Mr. George Howard and the other community people to fight for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, the next speaker is Jean Ishman.
Good evening. Uh, I too stand to-
Excuse me, your name and address for the record, please.
Jean Ishman. 1029 Ames Street in Hammond, Indiana. No problem. Um, I, I appreciate, uh, the opportunity to stand as well, uh, concerning, uh, Perling Jenkins' home. Uh, she was an integral part, as we said, of our community and a lot of us growing up, particularly me. Uh, and, um, we've, we've, we knew her, well, I've known her all my life, as such as, as Roelle said, and, and several of us others, and, um, she was a very dear friend to our parents. Um, she, you know, she, she did a lot of things in this community, and if you just look her up, you'll, you'll find out about the type of person that she was. She was, uh, very, um, active within the city of Hammond. She was a part of the Human Relations Commission. She was, uh, the, uh, president of the Hammond Chapter in WACP for several years. She was, um, you know, very well, uh, respected in the city, the state. Uh, she got the Sycamore de Waugh Award and several other things that, uh, that were due to her. So, we would just really like to preserve her home, and like, uh, Ms. Blackman said, there are other houses on that block that are a lot worse than hers is, uh, and, uh, we just really appreciate if you'd give us the consideration of, uh, working with Mr. Howard. I, I didn't know him until this now, but I, I'm happy that, that he has the home, and I'm hoping that we can, uh, keep it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Final speaker of the evening is George Stoya.
George Stoya, Robertsdale. Um, uh, in the course of that interesting discussion we had with respect to the EMTs, and from what I under- gathered from it, the so-called, given if you meet a certain quota of, of participants, uh, you, you, uh, the voluntary na- the voluntary nature of supplying EMTs, uh, I, I just wanted to bring to the council's attention, and it's just speculation, I haven't read tort law in quite some time, but I do remember very distinctly that you cannot necessarily contract away your duty of due care. I mean, you can contract with somebody to do the EMT work, but if should they mess up, I, I, what I'm leery of, and I just asked the council to ask, I'm requesting the council ask Mr. Berger to perhaps look into it, uh, you can contract with the EMT services to handle, uh, I guess, injuries and traumas, et cetera, whatever may happen at a sporting event, um, but Hammond might still be a deep pocket, and anybody familiar with personal injury law, there's nothing better to a tort lawyer than deep pocket, so, uh, I would ask that you ask Mr. Berger to look into, uh, to what extent can the city, um, contract away its duty of due care? I don't think you really can. I've read case law on this, but, uh, there's also hold harmless and, uh, indemnity clauses.
Thank you. Public expression is now closed. May I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion that we adjourn from this meeting. I so move.
Second. Motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Spitali, that, uh, the meeting be adjourned. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Have a good evening.